You didn't teach him this, how to get one up?
No, who's teaching me?
How to get one up?
No, he say you never stop loving him. And I believe. It saved the bad, you don't think about that.
Hey, how you done over there? So what you saying, say it's potential for another?
I swear, I had in your thing.
No.
I had a pie. I actually didn't have, I had a half a pie. Get murder again. I got a quart of pie. You get a quart of pie, you cut it again, you only got an eight, you only got enough.
So we're talking the same.
No, damn.
It's the same thing.
She, she, she used to call him behind myself. She said, I'm gonna be watching you. She would give her stuff. But she didn't give up on that time. She didn't dance it. I think that bank is working. Yeah, no. She likes to look around just. She likes jumping out. She just. What are you talking about? Her host, Nick Maxey, Willie Higginson, everything is covered, deal with Nick Maxey. The video's on this. And Betty Gago was like, that's. She didn't get none of it. That's your part of that. I remember. I know the. This is, he, some people. She used to, she don't pass everything. And when she does, because she does it down. It's worse. So when she does get mad, I don't respond at all. And this is pressed. I don't want to fight with her. What do you need me to do?
I don't have a fat work, I don't cheer up.
Move back to big areas as I say. Anytime we want to. Yeah, but the best I was to see what's going on. I said, that's when you get older. See now, that's the new people who will give us hope. Yeah, there's joy words come to my head. Oh, she didn't have sex. You don't know about one. I'm hoping. I think if you have your own bag, you don't want one. Put your feet where you want to. Cause we could be in a panic. So. I don't know if I can go up. Yes, she does, cause she come over and take care of me and Betty Higginson. When she get off of work. When she, you know, works, she come around, bring us something to eat. She come over and fix me up. Come and bring it to us. So. She, she, she come around taking it first and see if we need the hours taken there. That's terrible. I don't think she. I think she gonna offer that. Which they. That's an option. She's gonna give it. She always said, obviously, she gonna be a lot. And she got, that gave me something. We pay that. Like that. She's on this side. She's on this side. Oh, we getting it over ten, I'm not young. I'm glad you're here.
Well, good, I'm glad you could be there.
Y'all, I mean, crap.
Well, good, I'm glad you come. It was a night, it was a beautiful day. It was a beautiful day for it.
It was.
Ended up being a nice day.
I'm glad it wasn't yesterday.
You got that one, Jared.
Y'all must have looked at the van, but it wasn't.
No, we didn't. It's the same weekend every year, so whenever it hit, that's how.
Oh, oh, that's where y'all.
We were blessed.
Yeah, very blessed.
Is that what you said out there, you talking?
HR, HR, HR role.
Oh, she don't ever go through a H, she's all right.
Is it too late?
We just kept on. Thanks, I tried to push you beyond the steps.
You should have a room.
Okay, um, council. I would entertain a motion to adjourn the closed session and reconvene in session.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're now in open session. I would entertain a motion to certify the closed session by affirming that while in closed session, there was no formal action taken, and that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed, and only public business matters identified in the motions, convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered. I would entertain a motion to certify this.
Thank you.
Discussion. Uh, roll call Anna.
Fagan Spoon.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Honeycutt.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
Thank you, Anna. Okay, I will now adjourn the closed session. Uh, for those watching, uh, we're gonna take a five-minute break. Uh, appreciate your patience, and then we will reconvene in five minutes. Thank you, sir.
Please, thank you.
Kevin, you need me to get your bedpan or anything?
That's all right, I think I'm all right on that. I'll take you in with you.
The incident happened two weeks ago? Oh, man. It's been about a new since then.
I just had to work. Two of them went to the town. If they're found, they're good. I see, I see. I'm gonna go.
I made a, I made a bunch of calls.
I'll let him do it for me.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order our regularly scheduled council meeting for Monday, December the eleventh. Shall we pray? I most gracious Heavenly Father, as we assemble here tonight, let us truly be mindful of the many blessings that we each and everyone that we have. Dear Heavenly Father, be with those families across our country who have experienced devastation in the last day or so due to weather. Help them, comfort them. And dear Heavenly Father, as we think of this time of the year and the season, and what it means to each and every one of us, let us pause and remember truly what Christmas is all about. Dear Heavenly Father, as we go forward together as a body, let us do in your service and your will, that will be pleasing to others. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I would ask that we now stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anna, roll call.
Lily Fagan Spoon.
Here.
Ashley Hardy.
Here.
Gavin Honeycutt.
Present.
Lisa Jordan.
Here.
Dolores Lester.
Here.
Mike Moody.
Here.
Michael Smith.
Here.
And Joseph Taylor.
Here.
Thank you. Council, you have in front of your agenda, but we will be, I want to make a recommendation, a motion for addendums to that. Uh, one would be under appointments, an additional appointment that we'll need to discuss regarding rails to trails. Also, a discussion in regards to boundary adjustment, uh, public hearing, and also the, uh, uh, public, uh, on the, uh, on the boundary adjustment, and also the appointment on rails to trails.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve tonight's agenda with the attachments that you've just called, and that would be rails to trails, appointment, and the boundary adjustment.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, thank you, council, and we'll get to those as they come up on the agenda. The next thing on the agenda is citizens to address council. Uh, we have one that has signed up, I would ask that individual to come to the microphone and state your name.
You ain't calling my name yet.
Father's gonna let you? I said I have one, Mr. Wade Crapp. So if you'll please announce your name and, uh,
We almost got a clean host. Town council not doing something right, the public's not participating. I'm Wade Crapp. I'd like to thank the police, fire, rescue, and the town workers, they doing their best they can, so that's all you can ask to anybody. The town office is doing a good job, size some, and you, you know who that is. Okay, old man Hope said that new building we had down there, the public should have been invited to it. You didn't serve lunch or nothing on rank, so that public should have been invited to come down there and see what, see the building and see what it's used for. Right now, it's just a building set now. We, the public paid for it. So that's what I got to say about that, I'll just take a date, but the public wants to know what it's used for. All right, this water line on Plank Road. I thought it was gonna be a water line in the town to extend the water line over to the corporate limits. I didn't know it was gonna be a million and a half dollar outfit to go all the way down to Parkview, and then turn, come back, and put water on that road for people that owns that land over there. Now, the people that owned it, they ain't living no more, so somebody else got it. Special interest, we don't supposed to supply water lines, main water lines for businesses, or people that's already there, or people that's coming in. Because the town don't do water for the individuals, and they shouldn't do it for the people coming in here either. And that a million and a half dollars, I mean, I wouldn't have never known about it till said it don't cost a hundred, a million, two hundred thousand dollars, but now we gotta go past Parkview, so might as well say million five hundred thousand dollars. People in town don't know how we throwing money away. And we stay broke all the time, and six months ago, didn't have enough money to flesh the commode, and running out of water, and all this type stuff, now, boom, we're loaded with money. Money coming over to ears. So, and, and that's what the people think. And we used to have three classes of people, poor, middle class, and rich. Won't be long before the middle class won't be there no more, they'd be in the poor section line. So we gonna have two sections of people, we gonna have the rich people, and we gonna have the poor people. Middle class is gonna have to kiss their butt goodbye, cause y'all gonna jack taxes up, and million and a half dollar for a water line, and you jacked the water prices up, and the garbage prices up last year, well, that was this year. People can't keep on affording this stuff for spending money. Spend money, but let us know what you're doing. And I ring that boat in, and, but the people, we used to have a talking session in here, about what was gonna happen and what weren't gonna happen. Now, it's all done back there behind that door, and y'all come over here and say, we don't have no comment, we don't have this, we don't have that, but it's still going on back there, and then all of a sudden, you say, oh, we gonna put a water line in a million and a half dollars. I mean, it should be brought up to the people, the people of town need to know. If I'd have ever got on town council, they would have known, cause I'd have told them at the very beginning what was going on. So, we need to know. And that's all I got to say on that part.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Council, in regards to administrative reports, uh, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Some of it.
A second gap. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Under items for approval, uh, the first in regard to Kelly will discuss.
Yes, sir. Um, my first item is relative to the appropriation of funds for the industrial park fire pump. The fire pump located in the South Hill Industrial Park, currently serving one jeans wear group, is currently out of service. Recurring issues prompted staff to solicit quotes for the necessary replacement of the defective diesel fire pump and controller. A quote was received of VSC Fire and Security for two hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars, under cooperative procurement, allowing the town to procure services through another contract with a state agency. The quote includes a full three-year warranty to include monitoring and inspections. Staff has filed a claim with Versa, our insurance provider, in hopes to receive a full or partial reimbursement of the total expense. And I'll also add that I intend to have a conversation with the business owner on how to move forward from here. Um, the recommended motion is to appropriate a total of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars from the town's undesignated general fund balance to the current fiscal year budget for the necessary replacement of the fire pump located in the industrial park. I can answer any questions you may have.
Question. Kelly, approximately, when was the claim filed with Versa, and have they given you any recent response?
No, we are currently compiling information. Um, I can check with finance to see when the, the claim would have just been filed at the end of last week, if it, if it's been filed yet. Um, so we have not received a response yet, no.
Okay.
Um, I know it, it is listed as a separate item, so we do pay insurance on the fire pump.
Okay.
One other thing, uh, Ms. Rich, you did say that you were gonna have a conversation following up maybe what jean, one jeans wear group could do to maybe work together with the town.
Yes.
Uh, and maybe helping to maintain that pump, so it doesn't all fall on the town.
Yes, that's my intent.
Okay, fantastic, fantastic, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, I move to incorporate a total of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars from the town's undesignated general fund balance to fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget for the necessary replacement of the fire pump located in the South Hill Industrial Park.
Second.
Discussion.
A question, are there any other existing businesses in the park?
There are.
Corporations, companies?
Yes.
Okay. This is looking back, and I don't know the answer, that's why I'm asking. Do you know who paid to install the original system?
I believe this fire pump was part of the negotiations years, decades ago, way before any of our time, probably, um, in order to get that industry here. Um, and I do believe, I, I think it was that South Hill IDA that had ownership of the fire pump originally. Um, and then it's, along the way, it was turned over to the town.
Do you know, and if you don't, I understand, because it may have been sometimes, certainly hasn't been since, it's happened on council several years. Do you know when it was last repaired? Do you happen to know?
I do know, so what's wrong with it right now, apparently, is an issue that's happened two, about two times now, one time under warranty, and one time outside of the warranty. Um, and forgive me, I'm not fire pump savvy, so I'm not gonna do the lingo. Um, but I do know that this is, has been an ongoing issue, which is why we kind of feel the need to replace it as a whole. Um, and get this, I guess, type of repair done at this time.
Well, I appreciate that, my, my hope is that, and I appreciate your statement, that there'll be a conversation. Um, I have no objection to incentives to recruit, um, corporate tenants within our industrial parks, but incentives have a shelf life, and this one should expire with this appropriation.
Yes, and I will do my due diligence.
Thank you.
In that regard.
Anything else? Okay, so Anna, we have a motion in the second. Okay. Roll call.
Fagan Spoon.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Honeycutt.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
All right, the next item I have for you this evening is the acquisition of property. Um, there's a resolution included in your agenda this evening. The council previously expressed interest in the purchase of property located at one-eleven East Danville Street, with the intent to renovate the space for the South Hill Police Department. The property owner, Southside Planning District Commission, has agreed to sell the property for a sum of three hundred thousand dollars plus closing, which is a hundred and two thousand dollars less than the tax assessment. Um, please note, and I, um, strongly encourage you to note, that funds previously allocated for the police department renovations in the town's currently adopted budget can be used for this purchase, and don't require additional appropriations at this time. Um, again, the recommended motion is to adopt the resolution included in your packets, authorizing the purchase of real property located at one-eleven East Danville for a sum of three hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Discussion. You're enough, roll call Anna.
Fagan Spoon.
Yes.
Hardy.
Yes.
Honeycutt.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Lester.
Yes.
Moody.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
And Taylor.
Yes.
All right, moving on. Um, moving on to the boundary line adjustment, as previously added by the mayor. Um, a request has been received from Attorney Clint Clary to include three parcels on Union Mill Road, um, in the town limits. Formal documentation is currently being prepared, but in order to get ahead of the process, the request has been made to schedule a public hearing, um, at the January town council meeting by the requesting parties. So the motion is to, um, hold a public hearing on January eighth, that's your regularly scheduled town council meeting, to hear comments related to this request.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to hold a public hearing on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, hear comments related to the request to adjust the town boundary line to include three lots, identified as parcel numbers three-nine-six-seven-nine, three-nine-six-eight-oh, and three-nine-six-eight-two, located on Union Mill Road.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, and if I could, Sandra Tanner, the executive director of the chamber, could not be in attendance this evening, but did want me to pass along her sincerest gratitude and thanks to the council members, as well as town staff for their effort and support in yet another wonderful hometown Christmas event. Um, she wanted to specifically thank town staff that were in attendance over the weekend to be sure the event ran smoothly, um, and that trash was picked up. She, um, and myself look forward to a bigger and better event next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Agenda item A, under the finance portion, um, is a reappropriation of funds for South Hill PD heavy tactical vests. The fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three adopted budget included the funds in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for police uniforms. The police department budgeted for the purchase of heavy tactical vests, and the appropriation technically lapsed at the close of the fiscal year. Therefore, we need to reappropriate the twenty thousand dollars in funds in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget in order to purchase the heavy tactical vests for our police department.
I'd make that motion, um, mayor, that we reappropriate, um, uh, those funds for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three in the amount of twenty thousand dollars, and those would be for uniforms, account ten-dash-one-dash-zero-one-two-zero-dash-twenty-twelve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, um, our second item is, um, agenda item B, appropriation of funds for site readiness under business, business development. Um, the town received grant funds totaling fifty thousand dollars in November from the Virginia Economic Development Partnership Authority and the Virginia Resources Authority for the Brownfield Restoration and Economic Redevelopment Assistance Fund. We need to appropriate the funds into fiscal year twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four budget to the site readiness line under business development.
May I move to appropriate the funds received in the amount of fifty thousand dollars from the Virginia Brownfield Restoration Economic Redevelopment Assistance Fund until fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four town budget to site readiness.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, council, I am see, uh, you have in front of you the reports for information. Uh, would ask for a motion to accept reports as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, council, in your packet, and bear along with me on this one, we, just timeliness and whatever, uh, we've had several appointments that have come up, or been moved. And personally, I want to do them individually, it may take us a while, but I ask for your patience, I think it's important. Uh, each one of these individuals have been contacted and has agreed to various positions within these committees. So I will start, uh, in regards to the C D A, this is a four-year term. Uh, I move, uh, to reappoint Hannah Hayes to another four-year term on the C D A Board of Directors, commence in January one, twenty twenty-four, and ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I move to reappoint Ben Montgomery to another four-year term on the C D A Board of Directors, commence in January one, twenty twenty-four, and ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I move to reappoint Robert Smith to another four-year term on the C D A Board of Directors, commence in January first, twenty twenty-four, and ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
Okay.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I move to reappoint Carmen G. Taylor to another four-year term on the C D A Board of Directors, commence in January first, twenty twenty-four, and ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
Thank you.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Oppose, one.
Okay, I'm sorry. On the South Hill Planning Commission, uh, I move to reappoint Holly S. Farland to another four-year term on the South Hill Planning Commission, commence in January one, twenty twenty-four, and ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
Move. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I move to reappoint Woody Oakley to another four-year term on the South Hill Planning Commission, commence in January one, twenty twenty-four, and ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.